In case you guys get out of line here. We good? Okay, the Planning Commission meeting of September 2nd, 2020 will come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republics, our religion, families, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Secretary will call rule, please.
Commissioner Tolson.
Here.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Castleberry.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Hodge, second by Commissioner Vice Chair Castleberry. Unless there's any objections, the agenda will stand approved. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Yes, Chairman Mann, I'd like to make a correction to item five. It should be approval of the August 19th, 2020 minutes. It reflects the typo on the agenda.
Okay, hang on a minute. On today's agenda? Oh, got it. Okay, so on today's agenda, you have approval of minutes dated February 19th. That's actually supposed to be August 19th, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
We're correct. And we have a second by Commissioner Tolson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a motion made by Commissioner Rice, the second by Commissioner Tolson. Unless there's any other objections, corrections, changes, the minutes as amended or corrected will be approved. Okay, moving on. I know I have a number six over here somewhere. Declaration of conflict. The Secretary will read the declaration of conflict.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Hearing none. Public statements. This is a time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. Are there any public statements?
We have received no public statements today, Mr. Chairman.
Number eight, correspondence. Is there any correspondence from the Deputy Director, City Planner?
Yes, good evening Commissioners and Chairman. We received two supplemental correspondences. One to Agenda Item 10A1 with three emails attached. Those were provided by email to you. Also, we received a supplemental for Item 11A1, the Lost Canyons Project, which is a modification to Condition E1 with the supporting correspondence to that.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other correspondence? Consent calendar, I see nothing on consent calendar. Continued business. My script. This is the time and place set for the public hearing on the consideration of ZS 749B and the determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Hearing none. May we have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Good evening Chairman and Members of the Commission.
There is more, right?
This item was originally scheduled for the March 18th, 2020 meeting, but due to the pandemic, it is now being heard. So to recap, back on February 12th, 2018, the City Council requested a review of RV parking requirements on single-family properties. Since that time, the city has paused non-health and safety enforcement of RV parking regulations while this review is taking place. In February 2019, staff presented findings resulting from neighborhood council input from four meetings held in 2018 and requests at City Council direction. After discussing the item, the City Council directed staff to prepare proposed amendments to the Development Code to allow for additional rear yard parking on residential properties for both typical-sized and larger-sized lots with a permit requirement and to expand RV storage land use options for commercial and industrial properties. Back on January 22nd, 2020 of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to address these code amendments for rear yard parking and to add RV storage uses in the BP SP zone of the Brandeis-Bardin specific plan area and to streamline indoor RV storage approvals by allowing for an administrative conditional use permit. While the first two items were recommended by the Commission to move forward, the Commission, however, asked that a subcommittee of two planning commissioners be formed to further explore the rear yard parking options. On February 11th, 2020, the Subcommittee consisting of Commissioners Rice and Castleberry met with planning and code enforcement staff to review the history of parking on single-family residential properties, the proposed amendments, and concerns on enforcement. Staff reviewed with the Subcommittee various property layouts throughout the city, the pros and cons of accessing residential properties, issues related to adding additional driveway approaches, front and side yard parking situations, and how code enforcement handles parking complaints. At the conclusion of that meeting, the Subcommittee recommended that no changes be made to the ordinance and that enforcement of the existing rules resume. The Subcommittee was concerned about complications that could arise from adding an additional allowance for rear yard parking, including the following: broadening the parking location standards is likely to result in additional violations over time, which could hinder enforcement of the rules; second, loss of on-street parking due to additional driveway approaches; third, possible use of parking areas for inhabited recreational vehicles; fourth, lack of ability to regulate the type or condition of the vehicle; and fifth, lack of enforcement tools to create more detailed parking rules, that is, access to the site and rear yard of violators -- let me rephrase that, access to the project site and rear yard of violators, including licensing, tracking of vehicles and registrations, and monitoring, et cetera. And just to recap, the current rules for parking on single-family properties already depicted on this exhibit in the shaded areas. This is a typical lot configuration where you have a driveway leading to a garage. You are permitted to park on the front side area of adjacent to the driveway on the closest side between the garage and the side property line. You may park on paved surfaces on side yards adjacent to the house. And you can only park in the rear yard if it's within a carport or garage or on the driveway leading to that carport or garage. As discussed in January, the proposed parking amendments would allow uncovered rear yard parking up to 400 square feet for lots less than one acre and 800 square feet for lots of one acre or more. This square footage is equivalent to a two-car garage or a four-car garage. The revisions do not limit the number of vehicles, but rather just the area where the vehicles may be parked on. The provisions to allow rear yard parking include things such as having an approved curb cut from the street, it must be paved, it must not cover more than 40% of the required rear yard with all other structures, and a zoning clearance would be required along with an encroachment permit. Also, there are provisions for screening by use of a six-foot tall wall. There would be a gate setback where applicable. And the parking area must be set back three feet from the side and rear property lines. And lastly, if access to the rear yard is from the front yard, it can only access on the side of the house where the 10-foot wide parking strip is permitted. So, again, to refresh everyone's memory, the proposed code amendments are kind of depicted here where it's the same setup in the front and side yards. This area in this corner is an example of a possible 400-square-foot area parking area. Three-foot setbacks, access from a front yard driveway, which would be permitted. This area of a house kind of depicts this location as a possible solution to the code request. This is just another configuration in the rear yard, perhaps it's a corner lot with corner access, and there might be a situation where that could be a permitted parking area under the proposal. Again, this is a area of a possible situation that exists now where there's a RV parked in the rear yard, and it does have a -- Oh, hang on, we're having technical difficulties. I think it's there.
Yeah, evidently, there's no YouTube signal or no signal coming through on the YouTube channel. Commissioner Tolson sent me a text to the same effect, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, yeah, we're looking at technical items.
My understanding they can still hear. I'm sorry?
I'm having no problems.
Okay, there may be a YouTube issue. If you could still hear me on the Zoom, that should be appropriate as well. So Commissioner Tolson, can you still hear my presentation?
I can hear it and see it, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. So while we work out those technical difficulties, we'll proceed with the description of the text amendment. This is -- This is a RV parked in the rear yard, and this may be something that could be allowed with the proposed amendment. There is a setback from the side property lines, and it would have access from a driveway. However, they would have to relocate the gate and add a curb cut, and this is one of the situations where the Subcommittee felt, you know, there's a lot of requirements that have to be met, and just enforcing all the situations could pose issues down the long run with enforcement. This slide represents the kind of one-acre size properties where you could have 800 square feet of vehicle parking in the rear yard, and some people have concrete in the rear yards on the correct side of the driveway where they could pull back 800 square feet of vehicles. And in this instance, there is a RV parked in this location, so that could be something that's permitted under the provisions. To the contrary, we have situations where there's multiple vehicles in a rear yard, and some of this obviously is not permitted under the code because it is not parked in a garage. It's out in the open, and certainly for discussion, how do you address this? Some of the concerns were, are any of these being lived in? What's the condition of them? If we only allow 800 square feet and they start adding more, it could just increase enforcement situations. So, the recommendation is to consider the proposed amendments to the Seaming Valley Development Code and make a recommendation to the City Council. Our Deputy Environmental Services Director, Mara Mulch, is here in the audience to respond to any code compliance questions you may have as well. Thank you, and staff is available for questions.
Do we have any questions of staff?
This is Tim Hodge, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodge, what was that?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hodge.
So an RV is, under the definition, an RV like we were looking at there was something that you would get in and drive down the road, and it's a good eight feet tall, correct? That's one of them.
Yeah, or it could be taller.
Okay, or a trailer. A trailer could be, you know, the same thing, is that considered an RV, correct?
Correct.
Are boats considered RVs?
Boats, yes.
Okay, no matter how high?
There's no height limit spelled out, so if you want to address a height limit, that certainly could be addressed or added.
Yes, you, one of the things I'm driving at here is, as I was driving around, I saw that there were a lot of boats that are taking up space in the front yards as well, and I was trying to pay attention to the number of homes that could actually have a 10-foot, you know, an RV access to their backyards, et cetera. And I understand the thoughts and considerations of Subcommittee. I am going to ask staff to comment on the findings of the Subcommittee and why they were, if staff has comments on those particular findings. But as I was looking at this, I was thinking, you know, if we had uncovered parking space in the backyard and we could eliminate some of these boats that are all over some of the part of the driveways out front, that might be an improvement, not maybe as much improvement as some folks would have liked, but it would provide an opportunity to provide boats in the backyard that are under six feet, would not see them because of the size of the fences, you know, on either side, and then also discuss the possibility, I'm curious, if Subcommittee covered this, the possibility of allowing a RV, say, call it a, you know, big RV, a 40-foot RV in the backyard, but just have a limit of one on the property, so that you get rid of it in the front yard, you have it in the backyard, it can be uncovered, and it provides an opportunity to eliminate it as a hazard out front. So I'm curious if staff comments on that, if Subcommittee addressed this issue.
So one option is, we could ask the Subcommittee members directly for those, what their thoughts on it, those came up?
I remember something like that coming up, and basically what it came down to was enforcement, and that there was really no way for us to enforce it. So if you had a boat in your backyard and it wasn't seen, then code enforcement doesn't know it's there. If you have three boats in your backyard and code enforcement doesn't know that it's there, they can't enforce it. So that was my takeaway from --
If I could, I also was under the impression that we can't necessarily discriminate against vehicle types, that we can't, and I would like actually our Deputy Environmental Services Director to address this, because I think this did come up during this Subcommittee meeting.
Well, why can't we discriminate against vehicle types based on height and visibility? So that you have a vehicle that is, you know, 10 feet tall versus a vehicle that can't be seen, I like the idea of being able to make people compliant and allow them to be compliant and lawful in doing what they do. For example, if they have more than one boat back there, if they have one square feet where they could put more than one boat, and be in compliance, not have to be concerned about violating law, and then if a person has more than one RV, boy, you're going to see it, I mean, you know, standard travel RV, you're going to see it, and there's no way to hide it, and I don't see how that becomes a big-time compliance issue, but maybe I don't understand the requirements of code enforcement.
So I'd be happy to respond to some of those issues. Good evening. In regards to, in general, anytime you move anything to the rear yard, it becomes less enforceable, because we have to be able to see something from the public right-of-way or from a willing complaining party who then could be called into the --
I'm not hearing anything of speaking.
So with regards, can you hear me now? Commissioner Hodge?
I'm hearing no response.
We'll get her a proper microphone, standby.
Is this better? Commissioner Hodge and Commissioner Tolson, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I switched physical mics, so hopefully this helps continuously. With regards to rear yard enforcement, once you move things into the rear yard and there's some level of permissibility associated with it, it becomes very difficult to enforce because we have to be able to see it from the public right-of-way in an indisputable fashion, so we have to be able to prove that the violation exists to a court-level standard. If you can't see it from the public right-of-way, we could see it from a neighbor's adjacent yard, but they then will highly likely become a party to the case because we are now using their yard to gain a vantage point on their neighbor. Additionally, the Council has directed in the past that rear yard is not our focus of enforcement because it's people's individual property in the protection of property rights and for the respect of the fact that we don't want to be over-regulating our community. So when you move things to the rear yard, in nature of being able to document evidentiary standards and the Council's wishes of not being overly aggressive on rear yard enforcement makes it very, very difficult. There are some photos that Sean has shown that are already in violation, but because they're in rear yards and because the aerials show them, but not necessarily what we can see from the street and things of that nature, those become problematic. With regards to vehicle type, it's not a matter of the fact that we can't establish different standards. Currently, there's only one differentiation in our code that allows for, or that doesn't allow for, the parking of oversized vehicles as defined by the code in a circular driveway, and those vehicles are defined by height and size consistent with the vehicle code. If you were to start specifying measurements of vehicles, it would be very, very cumbersome and very challenging and difficult because many of the measurements that you would logically associate with an RV in our community are also associated with people's personal vehicles, whether it be an extended cab pickup truck with a long bed, whether it be a lifted vehicle that someone uses both as their primary vehicle as well as a recreational vehicle, but under the vehicle code, it's seen as a passenger vehicle. If it's a personal vehicle that doubles as a commercial -- If it's a personal vehicle that doubles as a commercial work truck but isn't registered as a commercial work truck through the DMV, but it doubles as that, it very well could hit those same standards as an RV. Additionally, when we start getting into boats, boats in and of themselves are not that high in many times, if it's, you know, like a small fishing boat or a powerboat of that sort. The trailer itself can extend the height of it. So now you have to get into specificity because it can be argued in court, well, my boat isn't that high. My boat is on a trailer that lifts it off the ground and elevates it. So you have to regulate to every situation that could be out there in the storage of these vehicles. Also, if there's an incline, we can't measure the rear of the boat that's backed up to the person's home because we can't enter onto their property to gain evidence against them without them inviting us on. So we wouldn't even be able to, we'd have to kind of guesstimate or be out there measuring from the street frontage of how high these vehicles are. So when we say that it's difficult to enforce, it's not difficult for us to eyeball and spot violations and to know that those are concerning based upon the standards we'd like to see or that some members would like to see. It's that when we actually try to pursue those cases and we move down the line of enforcement, the city's current enforcement options are, we send them a notice informing them, assuming that the individual may not know they're in violation, that they're just ignorant of what the rules are. If they don't readily comply with that, we send them what's called a notice in order, and that's more of a legal notification. If they don't comply with that, then they can be assessed a civil fine. If they don't comply with that, we send them a final notice, and then we schedule an office conference with our legal staff, and then we can pursue prosecution in a court of law for either an infraction or a misdemeanor, depending on the case details, frequency of offense, and things of that nature. So our enforcement remedies are also not ones that are going to readily remedy the situation. So somebody who is obstinate to the request of having the vehicle moved, it would take months and months and months and an extreme amount of resources to try to enforce against that person. So the easier that we have and the clear-cut standards that are more readily accepted by the community enhances the enforceability of those standards. Do you have questions?
I do. If, so if I'm understanding what you just said, and I think I did, because what you said was very logical and straight to the point, I appreciate that. But what I'm catching out of that is, is using all of those considerations, including the council not wishing to overly regulate persons' backyards, et cetera, then this whole thing about creating a rear yard uncovered parking space is, is a non-starter. It's something that it violates the various things that you just exactly said, and I see why the, the subcommittee said no. I mean, it's a fait accompli to me. I don't understand really even why we're talking about it, given the consideration.
So from my perspective, and I can defer a little bit more to Sean if there's additional information to add to this, the recommendation that staff came forward was a planning recommendation, not necessarily code enforcement staff's recommendation, but it was a recommendation based upon a community input and the historical community dialogue on this issue. This issue comes up every several years. In my tenure at the city of 12 and a half years, I think it's come forward three to four times, and this is the furthest it's got in the process of being considered for changes. So I believe what planning staff's intent was, was to take the community feedback and bring it forward so that it wasn't not being heard as much as we're fully vetting all of the options. And yes, we could do that, and we could allow a relaxation of our standards, but with relaxation of standards in these type of situations, you will never be able to tighten them effectively again in the future. Because somebody who bought their home under certain standards and made a financial commitment both to the biggest asset and probably the next biggest asset being an RV, their home and then their RV, and then the standards were to change several years down the road to more restrictive standards, those are very hard to impose, especially on residential properties. So I think the goal was to bring forward the community dialogue, to bring forward the various aspects and community input, and to propose something that, from a, from a land use zoning perspective, would be permissible. However, in full discussion with the planning commission at the prior meeting at which this was discussed, and then the creation of the subcommittee was to make sure that all of the issues were fully vetted. So I don't think it was meant to dangle something out there that wasn't feasible, but that maybe wasn't necessarily ideal once all things were considered, including enforcement options. And Sean?
I have no further questions.
Sorry, Commissioner Hodge, any other questions? Commissioner Hodge, any other questions?
I have no further questions.
I just wanted to say really quickly that your presentation was exactly why we came to the conclusion we did, so, thank you.
Commissioner Tolson, questions?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. Can we go to the slide where it's got the aerial view of the three houses where the one house has got five units on it? That's it, right there. Currently, under today's standards, what can be done with this one, right here, in the center?
So in this case, we don't know if there's actually a garage up here, but if we're assuming there is an actual garage here, you could park kind of where this vehicle is and a driveway leading to the garage. You might park regular cars and trucks on this circular driveway. And we don't know if there's a approved garage in this back area or an approved carport. We don't know if this is paved, but if this were concrete or asphalt leading to a garage, this could be allowed. What it appears though, if it's more like this one on the right-hand side where you just have vehicles parked in the dirt with no garages, none of this is allowed in this area I'm highlighting.
And on the left slide-
So the center one, assuming that's cemented, that is allowed?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. So currently, under current standards, or the ones we're proposing, which is no change, that's not allowed either?
Right, the, you know, these might not be the best example for an approved location. We'll look at this picture, this, this item here may be a garage, it may be a barn, but if it's a garage and this area is paved, you could currently park in this driveway if it were paved and this were a garage. That's just a quick-
Mr. Gibson, I apologize. Under, under what's being presented is that none of this would be allowed because the enforcement is what's going to be the challenge, right?
Yeah, what Ms. Mulch's comments were, it is, it is an enforcement challenge to enforce the proposed regulations that we are presenting tonight in the rear yard. You know, it, it may be feasible on paper, but it kind of opens a can of worms as far as an enforcement. So that's kind of what the explanation-
... that was next to you for 25 years, didn't mind that you had an RV on the wrong side of your driveway, for example. You get a new neighbor and they want enforcement on that, and then that's where we have these robust community discussions because people are operating under a perception or they viewed a home with certain standards in place even though they were never legal. And so same thing with the rear yard. Someone gets away with putting something back there and they may not have the appropriate carport or garage with the paved surface leading to it where they can park, but no one said anything, so it doesn't get addressed. And then over time, we have a significant shift in the realistic standard versus the legal standard that's in our code. But we will be discussing that with the council.
So this is going to happen every three years or however many you say, while we say, well, you know what, enforcement's going to make it much harder for us, but we've heard everybody and we'll, we'll address it in three years when somebody complains again.
Any other questions?
That's it for me.
Okay, I'm just going to jump in, I got a question. So this area here, we could not enforce with this aerial drone photography a case against this homeowner that obviously he's parking multiple vehicles illegally?
It's not that we couldn't, it has not been the direction of the council to be responding to these types of things without complaints. So if we had a complaint-
Okay.
-and we had the aerial, the aerial footage with date stamps from like Google Earth and those types of things, we could present that to legal counsel. However, what likely would happen if we had to take it all the way to the nth degree-
Right.
-taking it to the criminal courts regarding people's RVs in their backyard, so if we don't have a complaining party, and if we don't have, you know, other significant community concerns, a judge might be irritated by that. So that's the other part of the enforcement action-
Right.
-is we have to present it to a magistrate and hope that they concur that this is worth their time over their other calendar-
And I understand being proactive or reactive. Let's go, is there currently a limit for the number of RVs that can legally be parked on a residential lot?
No, there's no specification of units, it's just that they have to be fully contained within the approved parking areas on an approved surface.
And there are no current setback regulations for the front in the pictures that we've seen before, this one was submitted by Matt Doros. There's an RV parked right against the sidewalk. So there, there's no setback requirements for this?
So setbacks are usually, and Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but setbacks are usually used for areas that are not intended to be regularly occupied. So a driveway is intended to be regularly occupied with a vehicle. So our code does not require anything other than the vehicle must be fully contained within the driveway, meaning-
Okay.
-that it can't, it can't come out over into the apron of the driveway and obstruct the public right-of-way. If that were the case, they would get a parking citation from the police department.
Okay. If we consider the proposed changes and we allow parking in the back, I guess in theory, if this gentleman can park his RV, you know, drive it down the side of the house, park it in the back, we run the risk now of his neighbors having to look at this 10-foot tall RV and not liking it. Right now, neighbors in the front don't like it, but if we say, yes, you can park in the back, now in theory we run the risk of pissing off the neighbors in the backyard.
You, you run the risk of him having one in the front yard and one in the backyard.
Because we don't limit the number of RVs.
Correct, and we don't currently, other than a circular driveway, there's no limitation on the type of vehicle that can be parked in your driveway, right? So approved parking surface can have something parked on it, so there would have to be greater specificity, which would trickle down to all different types of vehicle types. So an oversized vehicle, just to remind you, qualifies for many people's personal pickup trucks.
Right. Okay, I'll defer some of the questions. No more? Okay, and I'll keep on going. Mr. Gibson, during your presentation, you said that the one picture, they would have to change the gate. If you could flip back, I can't remember which photo it was, that one, they would have to do something different with that gate to make it, what would they have to change on the gate?
So we have a separate code in the municipal code which requires a requirement that all gates have to be set back 20 feet from the property line. So in effect, the side yard gate is not permitted for, for access to the rear yard for various reasons, primarily vehicles crossing the sidewalk and providing blockage of accessibility of the, of that sidewalk. But we have a code where all gates must be set back 20 feet from the property line.
And, and I kind of understand the concept that a vehicle pulling it off the street, waiting for the gate to open should not be blocking the street, but considering an RV would not be used on a rare, regular reoccurring basis, and most RVs when they're backing up are certainly going to back, block the street for some length of time because no matter how good you are at parking your RV, you're going to have some kind of, whether you have a side gate or whether you're pulling in your driveway, there's still going to be some sense of blocking it. I guess so, in order for this to be, we'd either have to change the code to say that you don't need the 20-foot setback to leave this gate in place?
Yeah, we've explored options to allow for these side access gates on the property line on minor streets that aren't arterials-
Right.
-side yards only. I know I've talked with Public Works Traffic Engineering about some of these scenarios and they have reservations on certain aspects, but certainly we've, we've thought about doing a code amendment to allow something of this nature with certain restrict provisions. So it's, it's still out on the table and that, you know, could become part of a recommendation, and we could also come back with a further analysis of why that's, you know, may or may not be appropriate.
If, if I could just-
Please, yeah.
-just for a moment here, one of the other issues with having this there is that in order to, even if it was allowed, is, is that he would have to put in a curb cut. And if he puts in a curb cut, then we're reducing the parking along the street.
Well, that's going to be my next question. Are curb cuts mandatory or can they just go using a block system or ramps up and over the curb? Or are curb cuts mandatory for a gate?
Curb cuts are mandatory for access to your property with the vehicle. So with the proposed ordinance, it's spelled right into the code, you must have an encroachment permit, pay for one, properly install the ramp, must comply with Public Works requirements for that. You see instances like this all over the city where there are no curb cuts, and, you know, curb cuts are required, we don't want them hopping the curb on the opposite sides of their front yards or using the accessibility ramp on the corners. So curb cuts are required to, to access these parking areas.
Well, in this example, not only is there no curb cut, the gate is illegal, or that access is illegal because the gate doesn't sit back 20 feet. So if we're going to change that the gate doesn't have to sit back 20 feet, you're going to have to eliminate the curb cut requirement, otherwise you lose in theory parking on the street, correct?
You would lose, you would lose parking on the street regardless if, if the gate's there. What happens if a car parks in front of the gate because there's no curb cut? So how's the RV going to come out? So there's always issues, pros and cons of doing something like this.
Okay, yeah, agreed and understood. Curb cut, mandatory, relocation gate, whatever it is. Is there a difference right now for surfaces for a RV to park on, whether it is a trailer or a motorhome?
Yes, if it's an un-motorized vehicle such as a boat or-
Well, a boat has the motor, most boats have a motor.
I don't know, Mara, if you call a boat a motorized vehicle versus a, something on a trailer?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to look at the actual text of the code, but in, generally speaking, if it's a vehicle that is self-propelling, it would need to be on a paved surface-
Okay.
-because of the environmental impacts-
The fluid dripping from the motor.
But if it's on a, you know, if it was on a trailer that was fully contained that would prohibit that and it had like a, you know, rotor motor or whatever they're called in the back, that's not quite the main thing is having a full motor inside the, the actual RV. So a trailer, like a recreational trailer for sleeping and those types of things, doesn't have a motor, so it doesn't have the same surface requirements as an RV that you actually drive separately and independently that has, has a full motor. But they do have to, they have to be on a paved surface or on a, isn't it like a degenerated, DG?
Decomposed granite?
Yeah.
Dust-free surface such as gravel.
Okay. The proposed change, is that requiring mandatory in the back, if we're going to do parking in the back, concrete, or does the surface just have to reflect whatever's going to be parked on it?
We drafted it specifically concrete to avoid that ambiguity, but that certainly could be revised to include the gravel surface consistent with what's allowed in the side yards, should we go that direction?
Okay. Question regarding enforcement, I understand the subcommittee has a question on enforcement. If my RV is parked beside my house legally, behind a gate, you're not going to have access to that anyways for any enforcement as to if somebody's living there or anything else, no different than if it was another 20, 30 feet back passing into my house.
Correct, and there's already a significant amount of complaints related-
Correct.
-to the legally parked with individuals living in it. So just having it be, our current legal options already pose some level of community concern and issues. So by expanding that, we would anticipate that we would have an increase in that level of community concern and issues that get reported to us that can cause frustration because they're not as actionable as things in the front yard or in the right-of-way.
Okay, when you say in the right-of-way, define in the right-of-way.
Meaning in the street.
In the street, okay. But there, there are separate rules against parking vehicles on the street, correct? RVs on the street?
Yes, I was just referencing for general violations, any type of code violation that code enforcement- code enforcement would be pursuing, anything that's visible from the right of way or is in the front yard is very, you know, much more actionable than anything in the rear yard.
Okay. Um, thank you. Great presentation, by the way. Absolutely great. Uh, I have no other questions.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, then move on. If there's no question, no further questions of the staff, we're going to open the public testimony part, portion of the hearing. Do we receive any requests from members of the public to make a public statement on Zoom for this item? If so, please advise.
Yes, I believe we have no Zoom commenters for this item.
Did we receive any email comments on this after 5:00 PM today?
Yes, we have received one email after, after the cutoff time, and I will go ahead and read it to you. It says, "Dear Planning Commission, Commission Members, although the coronavirus threat has slowed down the business agendas on both the Planning Commission and City Council over the last six months, this unresolved issue of where RV owners are allowed to park on their property has gone far too long. It should have been resolved a year or two ago following the city staff's survey of community residents when Mr. Peros summarized the survey findings and recommended that the city put back in place a formal rules and regulations governing RV parking on private property. It was unfortunate that the city council did not agree or accept those findings. I can only surmise that several of them were RV owners themselves and were biased in believing that RV owners should have the right to park their oversized vehicles when they wanted, where they wanted on their property. Since the suspension of the rules and regulations governing RV parking on private property, there have been a number of RV owners in the city who have installed parking pads in the front yards. One RV owner in our neighborhood built his parking pad in front of his home on the opposite side of his driveway between his and his neighbor's front yards. The back of his RV sits against the front wall of his house and extends all the way down to the sidewalk. In addition, the owner has to jump the curb trying to avoid hitting a couple of city meters that are located on the parkway in front of the parking, of this parking pad. The homes in our neighborhood, like Maning Simi Valley, have very small yards. Huge RVs sitting on driveways and on parking pads that take up to 50% of the front yard looks terrible. It does nothing to improve the appearance of our neighborhoods or increase the value of our properties. I implore you to please act quickly on bringing back the old rules and regulations in regards to RV parking on private property. I think our city has been very generous in the past in what RV owners are allowed to do. However, those RV owners who built parking pads, whether on purpose or not, in places that formerly were in violation of the city's code should be made to remove them. Thank you. Jackie Neff from Simi Valley." This is the only email that we received on this item.
Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during public hearing? Not only that email, but I'm assuming the three emails that came in before.
Yeah, I have no additional comments from staff and I'm still available for any questions that may come up.
If there's no further questions, we'll, anybody have any further questions? Okay. Uh, if there's no further questions, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? We'll go with Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Chairperson. Looking at this, you know, at first it sounds like, hey, it'd be a good idea to move these vehicles to the back and get them off the front, but when you look at the enforcement aspect of it, it's, um, it just looks like it creates more problems than it, than it solves. I know that at one of the, um, neighborhood councils, they talked about possibly, you know, allowing pads on the opposite side of the house, um, but like the last email reference, then people jump curbs or they have to put in new curb cuts and I don't think that's a good idea either because that takes away parking. What I think would probably be the most prudent course of action would be to use our currently existing, um, RV regulations and just start enforcing them whenever it is that the city council decides that we're going to start enforcing them again. I know that many of my neighbors own RVs and they had no idea that there was even any discussion on anything and those that were following the law before are still doing exactly the same thing they were doing 10 years ago. So they assumed nothing had changed. So that's it for my comments.
Commissioner Castleberry.
So I want to thank staff for all the work that went into this. Between this meeting and the previous meeting, we had MSF committee meeting. We really explored this issue quite a bit. Um, one of my biggest concerns going into the subcommittee meeting was the fact that a lot of, uh, the RV owners here in town were jumping the curb and damaging the sidewalk, which puts taxpayers on the hook. And I wanted to make sure that our taxpayers here were not paying for the damages there. Now, after discussing enforcement issues and knowing how expensive it is to enforce, because a lot of these times you have to get warrants to go onto these properties, I do think that leaving the regulations as is makes it not only easier for the city, but RV owners already know what the regulations are. So hopefully, once the city council decides that we can enforce this again, we're able to start addressing a lot of the issues we're seeing in some of these slides and as well as the numerous complaints we've been getting from residents here in town.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm going to support the recommendation of the subcommittee. After hearing, uh, the staff presentation and, uh, juxtaposing that against the material that was provided in the staff report regarding the considerations by the subcommittee and then also hearing Commissioner Rice and Castleberry explain, uh, a little, with a little more, emphasis on certain things. It seems to me that that's the best course of action. In, in terms of, of, you know, this is two years to get, two and a half years to get to the same place that we are, but sometimes I think it is appropriate to spend the effort to make sure that if you, if you're not doing something, at least you, you know, have a good solid idea why. It's always good to, you know, look and explore that thing to see if we can get it improved. Ultimately, I agree with, uh, Commissioners Rice and Castleberry in the recommendation that we should simply, um, keep what we have and move it back, uh, to the city council for their discretion to enforce.
Commissioner Tolson.
Well, I don't want to belabor what's already been said, but, uh, basically, um, staff presentation's great. I think the discussion's been well, um, served and I think that, uh, keeping the current regu-, regulation and starting enforcing it is, uh, most-
We lost you.
That was it. I think we should keep it the way it is and start enforcing our current, current statutes.
Thank you. Uh, my comments are, it's a double-edged sword. No matter what we do, we're going to make some people unhappy, we're going to make some people happy. Yes, I think we should enforce the current rules that we have. Being that we have no front yard setbacks, the, the photo that I had already referenced once from Mr. Doros, that motorhome may or may not move. Even if we allow parking in the back area, that person may just go out and buy a boat and put the boat in the backyard and leave the motorhome where it is because it's really tough to change the rules of the game once you've already started. So those people that I think are complying with the rules and regulations will continue to comply. If the staff photo that we looked at earlier that had the four or five RVs in the back, even if you make this the rear yard uncovered parking space available unless he wants to go spend tens of thousands of dollars on concrete to concrete him in, you're not going to get him to change it. So I'm just not sure exactly if you make parking available in the rear, are you really fixing anything that needs to be fixed? So it, it's, no matter what we do, I think there's, there's, somebody's going to like us, somebody's going to hate us. I would like to see us enforce what we currently have, probably more so than opening up more parking in the rear for additional problems down the line. So if we have no other comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission, may I have a reading of the resolution?
A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley recommending to the city council approval of Development Code Amendment ZS 749B and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
May I have a motion?
Okay, I want to make sure I have this clear. Essentially what I'm, I'm asking to do is a move to denial of the amendments. Is that correct?
That would be in line with your, that would be in line with your thought process-
I don't want to say it backwards.
And your dissertation so far, yes.
I move to recommend denial of the amendments.
We have a, a motion-
Oh, one, one correction very quickly, but this, we already moved forward the Brandis Bard, okay, all right. So then I move to recommend denial of the amendment.
A motion is made by Commissioner Rice. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Castleberry. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can, I'm sorry, can you please repeat that?
That was yes.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolson.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Castleberry.
Yes.
Chairperson Mann.
Yes. The motion passes.
And Chairman Mann, the, uh, commissioners, this will automatically go to the city council and for everyone listening, uh, this is not the end of the situation. There will still be a public hearing at the city council level. Um, the meeting, uh, will be agendized and notices will go out and we'll try to communicate as best we can to all the people in the community of, uh, that recommendation. So there will be another chance at a public hearing.
And just to be clear, there is no appeal period for the zoning, right?
There, there is no appeal period. It goes to the city council.
Okay. Then we can proceed to the next item. Anybody need to take a break prior to? Okay.
We'll just take a moment to get set up here.
Okay. Yeah, evidently from the very beginning it was just no signal.
It happened soon.
To YouTube. Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay. This is the time and place set for public hearing on the consideration of Cluster Development Permit CDS 1021 dash MOD number one and a determination that the project is covered by the Lost Canyon's final environmental impact report for the previously approved planned development permit PDS 1021 located north of Lost Canyon Drive and west of Tapo Canyon Road. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
Yes, I spoke with John McClure, who is one of the applicants for this project, who, and we briefly went over the history of the project and the design of, the history of the design of this current phase.
Any others? Okay, I also have a ex parte communication with John McClure and I believe also on the call was Bruce Lewis, who was listed as the, um, contact for Newport Pacific Land Company, where again, they went over the history of it and, uh, had sent me the video that I'm, think we'll be seeing here tonight.
I would add on Bruce Lewis was also on my call. I wasn't sure what his name was. Yes, Bruce Lewis as well.
Okay. Uh, may we have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
This is Tim Hodge. I also had a, a conversation with Mr. McClure. Let me speak to this to that.
And I had a, uh, communication with Mr. McClure and Tom Martin too, over the phone.
Okay, that's it? Now, may we have an oral report on this matter by staff? Thank you, gentlemen, by the way.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Mann, members of the Planning Commission. This is, uh, one of the latest components of the Lost Canyon's development project. It's been previously approved as a specific plan amendments, tentative track maps and initial plotting of the properties. Uh, this component is, uh, one of the phases which is essentially the design and architecture of the, of 184 single-family dwellings. So tonight, our senior planner, Jennifer Santos, will be making a presentation. Jennifer.
Good evening. The applicant, NP LSC, Lost Canyon's LLC, is requesting a cluster development permit modification to construct 184 single-family dwelling units in a gated community on 168 acres within the White Phase Lost Canyon's specific plan area located north of Lost Canyon's Drive and west of Tapo Canyon Road. Per the municipal code, the Planning Commission is a decision maker for the preference request. The master plan development was approved for the construction of the 364 detached dwellings on approximately 1,700 acres as, as part of a master development per, permit. This, this phase of this request is Phase One, which is located up here. This is Tapo Canyon Road that will lead up to the Lost Canyon's Drive. This is Tapo Canyon Road. This is Phase One, which is, which is here before you tonight. And this over here is Big Sky Development, which the project will have access to all the way, Lost Canyon's goes all the way through to Tapo Canyon. Future phases will include Phase Two and Phase Three. Uh, Phase Two is called Dry Canyon and Phase Three is called, uh, South Tapo Canyon. The site is, as mentioned, the site is located north of Lost Canyon's Drive and west of Tapo Canyon Road. The proposed development will be located on parts of the existing golf course that has been closed since 2016. The site is surrounded by open space to the, to the north, south, east, and west. The city council approved, the show, the city council approved, showed, sorry. The city council approved the requests that are listed here in 2016, which involve a specific plan for the Lost Canyon's development to construct the 364 homes, also to, for the golf course improvements and open space dedications. The master plan development permit establishes a phase in further project construction and the final environmental impact report included a statement of overriding considerations due to the, its economic, social, and other benefits provided by the project, which rendered significant environmental effects acceptable. This picture depicts existing conditions of the site viewed from Lost Canyon's Drive. The housing will be clustered on areas that have already been graded for the golf course. The applicant is requesting to build the homes on variable front, side, and rear setbacks. This characterizes, these characteristics are in compliance with the specific plan requirements for preserving large open space areas around the white base slope and environmentally sensitive areas. The homes will be located on the previously approved clustered lots that were planned to max, maximize a grading and maximize a vistas and access to the golf course. The project is broken- The project is broken down into two sections. The western and central, the western and central sections include the Village Core bungalows, which is all right here, and the eastern section includes the North Canyon Estates, which is the circle here in yellow. The development would be accessed through two gated entries, one on the east side here, which will have a, a guardhouse, which may be staffed or may not. And then a western entry, which is over here, it's actually up in this area here, because this is the main access point into the golf course, which will remain open. There are two gated driveways for emergency access. One point, one exit is here, and one exit is down here. These will remain gated, and only the visitors, visitors and residents can only exit from the site. They will not be able to enter, and this will be available to them at all times. The proposed site plan shows a varied one-story and two-story elements. The gray shading depicts a two-story elements, and the white shading is a one-story element. The houses are sided forward and back in order to provide a varied streetscape with the purpose of playing one, placing one-story elements of a two-story house adjacent to a one-story house. This would provide a minimum 20-foot separation between the two-story elements, which is shown, this is shown here, how there's 20 feet of separation. As part of this approval, the applicant is requesting to modify one of the original conditions of the planned development permit, which required to have individual plans and layouts for each lot. It's, they're asking it to be revised to read as follows. Semi-custom, single-family detached dwelling constructed by the same individual or entity on two or more of the following lots that are referenced. This, they're asking this because as part of the condition, each home of these was supposed to be different. Each floor plan was supposed to be different. This, this in turn caused the construction cost to be quite excessive, making the homes of the, the price of the homes unattainable for future home buyers. This modified condition will help to provide a semi-custom design that will make the project construction more manageable. And this is for a future, this would be for a future phase. The first section consists of the Village Core bungalows that will include 126 houses that will range in size of approximately 2,300 to 3,700 square feet. There are six bungalow house plans that vary in size from single-story to two-story models. This plan shows a representative of a sample. However, the applicant, because there are so many plans, the applicant's going to be providing a presentation tonight that will go into more detail. Some of the houses like this plan will have two bedrooms with a den and a casita. The casita would consist of a bedroom and bathroom and have an exterior door. This plan shows the largest house. All the houses have substantial articulation and changes in colors and materials that incorporate a harmonious color scheme and accentuate the details. Some of the homes include a downstairs bedroom, like this one here, and all the homes include an outdoor room, like this one here that leads to the backyard and balconies. The North, North Tapo Canyon Estates section includes 68 houses that will, that include the shown square footage. The Tapo Canyon Estates differs from the bungalows in that there are four house designs with larger floor plans and larger lots. Just like the bungalows, each house within the North Canyon Estates has three architectural elements. These elements include Spanish Colonial Revival, Mediterranean, American, and American Eclectic.
Ms. Santos, I don't know what's happening, but you're beginning to sound underwater.
Was that just recently, or do you want me to go back a couple slides?
No, 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 you're good on that. It's just maybe if you could, I don't know what's causing it, maybe you're moving, or maybe you've moved a few inches away from the mic, but you are beginning to sound underwater.
Okay, thank you. Let me just repeat this one. Just like the bungalows, each house plan within the North Canyon Estates has three architectural treatments. The Spanish Colonial Revival, Mediterranean, and American Eclectic. This is the largest plan within the North Canyon Estates. The proposed landscaping for the project will consist of a rural design that will include a combination of California sycamore trees and coastal live oats, especially along the hillsides. The project is conditioned to include a minimum 36-inch box-sized tree unless the grading or space is not suitable for that size of a tree. Then the minimum size would be 24-inch box. The trees may be clustered to achieve more of a rural design as achieved by the specific plan. Based on the findings and conditions of approval included in the staff report and the application, the application is within the scope of the product design, scope, project description and environmental impact report. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the application request.
Thank you very much, Ms. Santos. Do we have any questions of staff by any commissioner?
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Please, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Hodge.
Yes, Ms. Santos, during the course of the, with the applicant, did you discuss with them, I believe that we in residential have an obligation regarding 368 design elements? Did you have that discussion with them? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Commissioner Hodge, please repeat your question, please.
Sure. I'm curious, I wanted to confirm with Ms. Santos that we have a design requirement for at least some design integration for each of the elevations for 360-degree design element.
Yes, and they are incorporating that, and the applicant will be able to provide that in their presentation.
Very good. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Tolson?
Nothing for me.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Rice?
Ms. Santos, I just have one question, and it's just because I don't know and I didn't understand it from, as far as the Ventura County Watershed Protection District, do they give, have they already given their approval, or is that something that comes later on in the process?
So a lot, a lot of these conditions were come forth as part of the original PD. They've just, they've transferred into this mod. So those conditions were already approved as part of the original PD.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. See if we have any other questions. We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to present the project?
Yes.
Go figure.
Yes. Good evening. This is John McClure. Good evening, Commissioner, planning commissioners, and Chairperson Mann. Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. So good evening. My name is John McClure. I'm with Lost Canyon's LLC. Tom Martin, who's also going to be presenting, is with Newport Pacific Land Company, and we're jointly working on this project. As mentioned previously in some of the discussions, we, we've had a long tenure in this land dating back 15 years, and wanted to give some background on that. So Scott, I don't know if you can move the, there you go. So this is a timeline that's pretty exhaustive. I'm not going to go through each item, but the project was originally submitted back to the, to the city council in 2005 with a hearing in 2006. And as mentioned by staff, we had approvals in 2011 for the environmental impact report, specific plan, and then followed that up with approvals of the PD, master PD, and the tentative track map in 2013, which was the last hearing we had before your commission. Since that time, we've been working diligently on achieving other milestones that are needed that are outside of the city, that are more state and federal-related. And just to give some background on that, we, we needed permits from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, a 401 letter from them. That was achieved in the year 2015. We also needed a 1602 agreement with the California Fish and Wildlife Service, which also was achieved in 2015. And then we needed a Army Corps of Engineers permit, which we achieved in 2017. So there's been quite a bit of time that's passed in, in working on these various permits that are needed to move forward. In 2018, we began working with Newport Pacific on the development of the project and have since, since the beginning, or probably the first, second quarter of 2018, begun work doing the plans, engineering plans for the streets, water, sewer, paving, drainage, grading, which has been in a review process with the city of Simi Valley and Public Works. That process is almost complete, and the, the next step in the process is to come back before your commission and to present the floor plans, elevations, and the product, actually, that would be constructed on the lots. So in that effort, we've been working with staff and appreciate their, their time and involvement with Stratus Haros and Sean Gibson and Jennifer Santos in, in working to get this before you tonight. So we appreciate their efforts. I will turn it over at this point to Tom Martin with Newport Land to walk you through the architecture and the thoughts behind that. Tom's background has, he's been involved in a number of higher-end luxury home developments over his career, including some projects in, in Orange County and San Diego, that Seven Bridges in Rancho Santa Fe and Tota de Casa in Orange County. And so has, has a lot of experience under his belt in developing the housing product for these kinds of communities. So again, thank you for your consideration this evening, and I'll turn it over to him to make the presentation from here. And I'll remain available for questions if needed.
Okay, well, thanks, John, and thanks, commissioners and staff. And I'd also like to thank the staff, the planning staff, and you didn't mention Vern. We did a lot of work with Vern. And Tim, you had mentioned that, you know, that there was to be a focus on 360 architecture in these plans, and we had, we spent a significant amount of time with Vern on that effort. So I just thought I'd add that to the proceedings. So I'd like to first present to you the bungalows, but also show you a drive-by and fly-through video first before we kind of get into the details. So as you can see, there's been a lot of work that's been put in in the architecture and that video. Actually, and I'd like to thank Placeworks, who did the video for the bungalows and the estates that you'll be seeing in a couple of minutes. So a couple of things we want to talk about in the details of the bungalows. So these have all been pre-plotted and plotted in composition. So we get maximum diversity in the architecture, in styles, and in colors throughout the community. So in every case, one stories are plotted on the corner lot, so that sort of relieves the entrance into each one of the, of the street. Never are two, two-story plans side by side with less than 20 feet between buildings. And you can see there's a significant amount of variation and articulation, both horizontally and vertically, between the homes. We have six floor plans with three exterior elevations plus color schemes to ensure street scene diversity. So I, I think if you take all the different iterations within the community, I don't, I think there, there is a plan and an elevation and a color scheme repeated only once throughout the 126, 128 square feet home. But also, the majority of the homes are on single-loaded streets with great views. I think about 80% of the homes within the bungalows do not have a home across the street from them. And, but what that also means is you can see them from a distance. So we have spent a lot of time in articulating the rears of the homes that you could see in the video, and you can also see in, in the PD package. And also, there's a package system sent to you that, the board that shows all the elevations, both the fronts and the rears. So there has been a particular focus on rear elevations in shadow, in color, in materials, and in articulation. So that's the bungalows. So why don't we move on into this estate? So why don't we move on into this estate? So that's the estate. So let's talk a little bit about some of the details on the estate plan. So we tried to plot the single-story homes on corners wherever possible, but we didn't get every one, you know, as you know, a one-story footprint set at the square footage of that home, especially being a core home like that. The footprint's pretty large, so we couldn't fit them on all, but we got the large majority of them. As required in the specific plan, there's a minimum of 20 feet between buildings. And I can tell you, there's certainly a lot more than that on those lots out there on site. So with four floor plans and three exterior elevations plus the color scheme, no home will be repeated throughout the entire neighborhood as far as color and style and plan. So that makes it basically a semi-custom neighborhood. So and again, the large majority of the streets are single-loaded and are cul-de-sac. And so you can see that their rear elevations. And so we spent a lot of time making sure that they were different from each other, but also, you know, many of them look like fronts. And I can tell you that I've been in this business a long time designing homes and planning communities. I've never spent so much time on the design of the rear elevations. So we're really proud of it. So then, uh-oh, so there should be a general, there it is. So generally speaking, what you see in all these is the contemporized version of the traditional style. So the specific plan, as you know, has Mediterranean, Spanish, and eclectic ranch, which we can't quite figure out what that was, but we're assuming it's kind of ranch style. And what we've done is taken and we've contemporized them. So you can see that there's a lot of play and color, they're crisper. You know, if you take these, for example, and put them against Big Sky that was done in the early to mid 2000s, you can see that, you know, when you drive the street scenes there, the streets are very monochromatic. We're seeking a lot of pride and getting a lot of variation in articulation horizontally, vertically, and in color throughout our neighborhoods. So again, they're very eclectic street scenes. The architecture for design, so the current setback call for the garages and the living areas to be on the same plane. So what we've done is we've moved the living areas forward and reset the garages as much as you possibly can to make sure the garages not necessarily go away, but keep. So and then, again, we have, throughout the neighborhoods, we have well-articulated rear exterior elevations. We pre-plotted all of them in composition, so we know what we're getting. And you can feel on what you're getting because they've been designed and they have been plotted. And so and what's interesting about these two is the floor plan designs. If you look through the floor plan designs, you're going to see a lot of things that are not only the latest trend, but very important to selling homes these days. And so you've got casinos, there's multi-generational lock-off suites, which are being used not only for grandma or for the kids that comes back from school and can't afford rent, but also people are using for home offices, kitchen rooms, man caves. So it's multi-generational lock-off suite facility if you use that are designed. And also, we have, we're offering home offices in there. Because of COVID, because you're living in right now, a lot of people are working at home and not going into their offices. So the home office in architecture is making a comeback. And we'll see many of them in our plans. Also, of course, there's the great rooms. The living rooms, of course, have gone away completely. Some of the plans on the larger plans have form of dining rooms, but they're still using hot. So it's the great rooms are really a key thing. But the cool thing about the great rooms is the outdoor spaces that are adjacent to them that are covered. So those not only help with, let the plans breathe, but the indoor-outdoor relationships of people. Our places out there, they have barbecues there, and you can dine. What's that?
I need you to wrap this up because you are past your 15-minute lot of time.
Okay, no problem. So then, and then finally, the broad spectrum of buyer type. So one stories, we're going to get move downs, we're going to get empty nesters, we're going to get first-time move-ups and ultimate move-up buyers. So that is my presentation, and I really appreciate your attention, and thank you very much.
No, thank you. Okay. Do we have any? Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Castleberry, Commissioner Hodge, any questions of the applicant?
No questions here.
Did we receive any requests from members of the public to make a public statement on Zoom for this item?
Yes, Chairman, we received approximately five or six attendees, we call attendees in Zoom, who may wish to raise their hand or press star nine on their phone. And then we will go through the list of anyone who may wish to speak on this item.
Okay.
And I know we have Eric and Natalie. If you want to use your hand raise function, if you wish to make a comment, then we could unmute you.
Looks like we have a winner with Natalie.
Yes, we could allow Natalie to talk. She has five minutes, I believe.
Yeah, we're easy.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you fine, Natalie.
Great, thank you. Actually, my husband and I are residents here in Big Sky. And as I watched your rendering of the property you're proposing, it sounded as though there are obviously two entries, one off Lost Canyons and one will be Tappo Canyon. The one of Lost Canyons, did I hear that correctly? That both will be gated and you will only be able to exit through that one going through Big Sky? So in other words, Big Sky residents would not be able to go through Lost Canyons to Tappo Canyon?
No, I don't believe that's true. I believe the entrances into this complex are off Lost Canyons Drive that will be gated. And there's two exit-only gates, one onto Tappo Canyon, one onto Lost Canyons Drive as well, correct? But the gates will still allow Big Sky residents to proceed down Lost Canyons Drive to Tappo Canyon, correct?
Yes, Lost Canyons will not be closed off.
Yeah, so Lost Canyons is an open thoroughfare that will not be gated.
Okay, because that is important for the safety of the residents of Big Sky to be able to evacuate in both ends. So not to be bottlenecked at one end, yes. Okay, so that was my concern. My other one is, I think you said that three phases this building would occur. There's a first phase, which is up more north of our, towards the golf course, and then phase two and three, which is more on the other side, south.
So phase one?
I was just trying to remember.
Go ahead.
So this project before us tonight is phase one, which is north of Lost Canyons Drive. Phase two and phase three will be south of Lost Canyons Drive. It's actually further, it will connect to the city limits through that development over time. But they're still going to be spaced away from the Big Sky development. I can show you a map if you'd like.
That would be great. Actually, is your presentation going to be available at the city website that we can refer back to? Because my husband wasn't able to attend this. I'd like him to be able to see it.
Yes, this meeting, you can watch the video from the Gortnikus and Ikonasu. Yes, it'll be available.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate.
Thank you for your active participation.
Great, that's all I actually had at this time, and I appreciate the meeting.
Thank you very much. Do we have Eric on the line?
Yeah.
Eric, I don't see a hand raise, so he may not wish to speak. If you don't know how to raise, if you're talking by phone, you could hit pound nine to raise your hand. Or use the raise hand feature.
Can we just unmute him and see if he's there?
We can unmute him to see if he responds.
Okay, let's do that.
Eric, you're muted, do you have any comments? Click S. Okay, I believe he has no comments.
Okay.
So we'll give it a shot.
Do we have any other attendees? Nope. Those are all panelists. Okay, did we receive any email comments on this item received after 5:00 PM today? I'm getting a shaking head, no, that we have no emails received after 5:00 PM today. Okay, are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during public hearing?
No, I have none, Jennifer, is there anything you want to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing?
No comment.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the planning commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Hodge. Oh, Commissioner Rice. Oh, Commissioner Castleberry.
Um, I'll just say that I think that, I mean, the modification before us is to allow them to do semi, to do semi-custom homes rather than custom homes. I think it makes sense in this market to do what we can to make this project more affordable for residents. If it is going to be a major cost burden in order to do custom homes for all 168 units, it makes sense. This project's been approved by the council. It is within a specific plan area. I know there are concerns building into our hillsides, but we do have the hillside performance standards for this reason. And so I am in favor of this project.
Commissioner Tolson, Commissioner Hodge, any questions?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I don't know, I guess we do.
Are you, are we taking comments?
You know, it's funny because I don't have it to close it on my agenda. Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, let's go back. If there's no further questions or comments from the public, we are going to close the public testimony part of the hearing. Thank you for pointing that out to both of you. Now, we'll go back to, are there any other comments from members of the planning commission?
Okay, well, I think Commissioner Castleberry already stated his.
Sorry.
Okay, so I personally, I really like these balconies. I think the balconies are really nice. I, that is an awesome feature to have, especially up there. Those people are going to have great views, and that's really nice. I agree with Commissioner Castleberry on allowing the homes this way. Instead of making them all custom, it makes a lot of sense in the market. I like the fact there are so many single-family homes. The only thing that gave me pause is there's a couple of the two-story buildings that seemed a little flat in the renderings. But I think the simulation helped ease my mind on that because the way that so many of these homes are offset from each other and the way that they're, the different models are mixed up, I think I feel a lot more comfortable with that. So because of that, I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Tolson?
Sure. As it relates to the bungalows, I like the floor plans and the variations and the fact that there's single-loaded streets as it relates to the estates. I like the fact that there's no repeats color-wise, the floor plans, and again, single-loaded. I'm in favor of modifying to the semi-custom request. And I like the, I like the casinos, the multi-generational elements, the great rooms. And I'm just interested in that the video had no RVs in the entire project. But I'm in favor of the project.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Hodge, anything for you?
Yes, just briefly, I'm in favor of the project. There are so many good things to talk about with the way that this was designed. I'm really excited at the fact, in looking at the manner of the architecture and just the way that they were designed, that this isn't just something that we already have. This is, this project looks unique, it looks updated, it looks very nice. It's the kind of thing that we, I don't, I don't know that we have have had this kind of housing developed in Simi Valley for quite some time. And, you know, and our obligation, or rather, the interest in the city is to have various housing types. And this certainly, you know, fits into that element of providing housing for people of means, but more than I have, which, of course, is one of the things which is important to the development of a well-rounded city. So I'm excited about the fact that this isn't the same old house that's just big and has great views. These are beautiful homes. I love the casino idea. I really think that's just a terrific element. I agree with what's been said previously about the non-repetitive nature of the elevations on the individual streets, giving it more of a custom approach. As you drive down an individual street, you won't see, you'll see similar houses perhaps, but they won't look really a whole lot alike. One of the things I really was impressed by was it's at least one home that from the front of it, it looks like some little tiny bungalow that you might, some little rock house that you might see out in the desert. Small, I mean, like you look at it and think, wow, this thing's what, 800 square feet or something? And then it opens up as it goes back and becomes this, you know, very nice home of an appreciable size. I thought that was extraordinarily clever. I understand that there are no sidewalks, but that was previously approved in plans, so there's nothing to talk about there. I'm, I was a little bit concerned about the 360 architecture. And the more I, and I still am a little bit on the sides of the homes. But at the same time, the more you look at it, it seems that these houses were designed where the, there are a limited number, sort of a real limit, I'm not exactly sure what the phrase is, but you don't have a lot of specific design elements that aren't specifically related to the shape and color of the home. So it's not like there's a great deal of lighting and all kinds of shutters and these kinds of things. There are some that have quite a bit of rock work and that kind of thing. And those, the backyards, you know, have some tie-ins. I would have liked to have seen a little bit better on that, but, you know, to me, this is an outstanding project and well worth our support.
Okay, for point of clarification, I believe I misidentified, my ex-party communication was with Bruce Lewis. I believe actually it was Tom Martin.
I agree.
That we had spoken with. So my apologies to Mr. Martin and Mr. Lewis. My comments, I like the spacing of the houses away from each other. I like the staggering, I like the design. What I really love is the land use, the way they don't have them backing up to each other. I think they have used the current curvature of the land and the design and the terrain admirably. Like Commissioner Hodge, a little twerking of the four-sided architecture. I have some reservations on some of the sides of the buildings, although it's not huge. I think a little bit more four-sided architecture can be done on the sides. I think the fronts are absolutely drop-dead gorgeous. The backs, I love the patios, the balconies, the verandas, everything about them. The sides, I think there's some larger white space that can be addressed, and we'll let staff do that. My other last comment is, I love all the people in the fly-by video. Everywhere you go, there's 15, 20. Everywhere you go, there's 15, 20 people in those videos, none of them wearing masks and all violated COVID-19 regulations, but I just love all the people in the videos. Other than that, I think it's a great project for what they have up there. So with that said, may I have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC 092020, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving Cluster Development Permit, CDS 1021, mod 1, and a determination that the project is covered by the Lost Canyon's final environmental impact report for the previously approved planned development permit, PDS 1021, located north of Lost Canyon's Drive and west of Tappo Canyon Road.
The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving Cluster Development Permit, CDS 1021, mod 1, and a determination that the project is covered by the Lost Canyon's final environmental impact report for the previously approved planned development permit, PDS 1021.
May I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second.
We're going to give this one to Commissioner Hodge. I have a motion by Commissioner Rice and a tied second that we'll give to Commissioner Hodge. With that, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolson?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Castleberry?
Yes.
Chairperson Mann?
Yes. The motion passes. The appeal period for the Cluster Development Permit modification is 14 calendar days. Before we proceed to the next item, we're going to take like a five-minute break. Give staff time to get set up. So we'll see you back in five minutes.
We're back to applicants.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night. Thank you.
We good? Okay, thank you very much. This is the time and place for the public hearing on the consideration of ZS 752 to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code regulating accessory dwelling units and determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Commissioner Hodge, Commissioner Tolson, you're both online, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're just not showing on my screen. Me, we have an oral report on this matter by staff.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Mann and members of the Planning Commission. This is a proposed amendment to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. If you may recall, this has come before the city in the past couple of years as a result of state legislation to require accessory dwelling units. There's been some ordinances and amendments, and January 1st, 2020, some new amendments kicked in as regulated by the state. And most of the tonight's proposed ordinance is under the direction of the state law. So there's a lot of complications with this ordinance. That's why it's kind of taken so long to get to you guys tonight. But our associate planner, which I'd like to introduce Narin Gunasakara. He's been with the city since August of last year. He's our associate planner, and he will be presenting tonight's report. Narin?
Good evening. As of the 1st of January 2020, state adopted amendments to the development standards for accessory dwelling units, known as ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, known as JADUs, went into effect. These amendments were signed by the governor in 2019 to facilitate ADU construction in response to the ongoing housing crisis in the state. As a refresher, an ADU is an independent living unit with a kitchen and bathroom and can be either attached or detached from a primary residence. A JADU is a smaller ADU within a home's footprint and may have shared bathroom facilities with the main home. The state mandated changes impose additional limits on the city's ability to regulate ADUs and JADUs and necessitates an update to the ADU development standards adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council in early 2017. State law is operative until the city's code amendment is adopted. These are the code sections that will be amended by this update. State law has changed the allowable number of accessory dwelling units on a lot. The Development Code previously limited the number of accessory dwelling units to one ADU or one JADU per lot with a single-family dwelling. The Development Code must now allow a detached ADU with a maximum size of 800 square feet to be combined with a JADU with a maximum size of 500 square feet within the single-family dwelling. A maximum of two 800-square-foot detached ADUs must be allowed on a multifamily zoning lot. Where there is an existing multifamily dwelling, attached ADUs must be allowed within portions of the building that are not used as livable space. And the number of ADUs can be up to a maximum of 25% of the existing units. The update requires that larger ADUs be permitted. The Development Code previously limited ADU size to 30% of a home's living area, up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet. State law now mandates that at least an 800-square-foot ADU with four-foot side and rear yard setbacks must be allowed on any single-family lot irrespective of the home size or the lot size or similar factors, apart from health and safety considerations. These setbacks are a reduction from the earlier standard of five feet. The front yard setback remains at 20 feet. Additionally, local jurisdictions must allow a maximum of 1,000-square-foot ADU with an absolute cap of 1,200 square feet. Jurisdictions can impose additional development standards after the 800-square-foot threshold. For attached ADU sizes, that is, an ADU that shares a primary wall with the existing home, the proposed code amendment allows ADUs over 800 square feet to be up to 50% of the existing home size to a maximum of 1,000 square feet. Therefore, a maximum 1,000-square-foot ADU addition would require at least a 2,000-square-foot home. Attached ADUs that are additions to an existing home will be subject to the four-foot rear and side yard setbacks mentioned before and the 20-foot front yard setback. Attached ADUs or JADUs that are within the existing home will not require additional setbacks. If an applicant wants to create an addition for a JADU, that addition will be subject to standard setbacks for a home addition. These are the five-foot side yard setbacks for a one-story addition, 10-foot side yard setback for a street-facing or two-story addition, and a 20-foot rear yard setback. For detached ADUs, the proposed code update allows lots up to 8,000 square feet in size to have a maximum 800-square-foot ADU. On lots over 8,000 square feet, this maximum will be 1,200 square feet. ADUs over the 800-square-foot threshold mentioned before will be allowed as long as they meet a maximum of yard coverage of 40% and are able to keep at least 50% of the rear yard width open. Both of these are existing standards for detached accessory structures currently. Moving on to more development code updates, as you can see, in the previous code, ADUs were allowed above a garage. In the proposed code, no ADUs will be permitted on a second floor or above garages unless there is no other location for an 800-square-foot ADU on the lot. ADUs will continue to be limited to 18 feet in height. Owner occupancy, which is previously required for ADUs and JADUs, is no longer required for ADUs until January 1st, 2025. But this will still be required for JADUs via deed restriction. The minimum rental period continues to be 30 days. Replacement parking is no longer required for garage conversions or conversions of existing permitted accessory structures. Previously uncovered spaces were required for garage conversions. The review period for ADUs has been reduced from 120 days to 60 days unless it is part of a review for a proposed single-family dwelling. Objective design standards have also been included in the proposed code update to ensure architectural compatibility for ADUs with the existing home. These standards include requiring the same color and materials for the ADU as the existing home and a roof slope that matches the dominant roof slope of the home. Other state law updates include allowing owners of a substandard ADU to have five years to correct the violation if it is not a health and safety issue. State law also nullifies homeowner association CCNRs that prohibit JADUs or ADUs. The city can identify ADUs to count towards Reno housing needs, and the housing element will need to be updated to include a plan that incentivize construction of affordable ADUs. The updated definitions will include removing the definition for a guest house. The main difference between a guest house and an ADU is that a guest house cannot The main difference between a guest house and an ADU is that a guest house cannot include a kitchen. This definition will be removed as it was determined that guest houses serve pretty much the same purpose as ADUs in the relevant zones. Continuing to include the guest house option may result in up to four habitable units on a lot with a detached ADU, a JADU, the main home, and a guest house. The proposed changes will update the city's development standards for ADUs and JADUs to be in conformance with state statutes and utilize the available regulatory options to maintain neighborhood quality. It is recommended that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council the approval of Z-S-752. Staff is available for questions.
Do we have any questions of staff?
So when we calculate what this new ordinance, our RENA number contribution from ADUs, they go towards the lower or the moderate income category, correct?
It is moderate unless it's constructed in a census tract that has low income.
Okay. Commissioner Rice, any questions?
Can I get a follow-up on that last answer? What does that mean unless it is in an area with low income? What does that mean?
The city is divided amongst census tracts, which the government identifies as a low-income census tract of a certain income level. So if they fall within that area, the ADU construction could count as a RENA unit if it's in a higher income.
My question is, do we have any in Simi Valley areas that are designated as low income?
Yes, we do. I cannot identify them here, but they're out there.
Patricia Street, isn't that?
I would say First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth Street, those areas as well are probably low income. I'm sure the city has that information.
A lot of them are on the valley floor. There's a census tract map which identifies these particular areas. You may be surprised what some of them are at, but there's a formula on how to calculate that, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hodge, any other questions? Commissioner Tolson?
No questions for me.
Commissioner Rice?
Narin, right? Narin, could you go back one slide for me, please?
Can you turn his mic on?
Hold the side up.
Did it say that up to four accessory dwelling units could be on a property?
Go forward a slide. It was on that.
Was it on the other one?
That one.
It's this one. So two ADUs, two accessory dwelling units are allowed on one lot. One has to be a JADU that's within the existing home.
Okay.
And the other one is a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
We currently allow guest houses as well.
Okay.
So the only difference between a guest house and an ADU is that a guest house doesn't have a kitchen.
Right. But we're going to change it, and it's going to be an ADU.
Exactly. So in theory, somebody could build a guest house, a detached ADU, and a JADU, and have their main home, and convert... So basically, their single-family lot is now four units.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Wow. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for the record, we're getting dozens of requests monthly, daily, for accessory dwelling units. And a good portion of those are for JADUs and ADUs already, so these things come up.
Okay, my question, the development code upgrade, is that a state mandate or is that the city's choice?
It's a state mandate. Right now, because we have not updated our development code, state law is operative.
So go back a couple of slides for me, please. Back. ADUs used to be allowed above a garage, and now they're not. So that is state ordinance or state code that says you can't have them above garages?
No, the state law allows you to put an ADU pretty much anywhere you want it.
Okay.
It can be as tall as you want, you know?
So this ordinance about nothing, no ADU above a garage, that's not the state, that's our city, right?
That's our city, yeah.
So these development code updates are not mandated by the state, they're being chosen by the city.
Certain aspects of it.
Okay. The requirement about no ADU over 18 feet tall. So I couldn't do a detached two-story ADU?
No.
Can I do a two-story JADU if I currently have a two-story house? To follow the same footprint and outline of my current two-story house, could I not do a two-story JADU?
I would say no, because a JADU is typically part of the house being cut off where it's 95% of the time, it does no longer require a common doorway, that's an option now.
Okay.
And theoretically, if it's a two-story JADU, you'd have to have a separate staircase for both the main house and the JADU. So a single-story JADU is the typical aspect of that.
But if we do, back to the ADU, I could not do a two-story ADU? And again, that's the city mandating or stating that. That's not... The state says yes, but the city wants to rein that in and say no two-story ADUs.
That's correct.
And the logic behind that was what?
We're trying to maintain the character of the community as best we can, and to add multiple-story structures, maybe going well beyond the term accessory. So there is certainly something for debate if the Planning Commission or City Council want to expand on that. But our thoughts were, an accessory unit should maintain a single-story aspect just to maintain that without overreaching JADUs, again, 500 square feet's the cap.
For a JADU.
For a JADU. So we think that the single-story component is the appropriate first step.
So under your guideline here, if there's no way to put a 1,200-square-foot JADU, because they can do 1,200 square foot, I mean, sorry, it's an ADU, they can do 1,200 square foot if the house size allows it? What's the maximum size of an ADU?
Yes, 1,200.
Okay. So if somebody wanted to build a 1,200-square-foot ADU, but the lot size would not allow it, under your proposed code, no ADUs permitted on a second floor above garage unless there's no other location for it, so if there's no other location for it, could they do a two-story
My understanding is no. Because they would... So just to clarify, the limit is 800 square feet?
Well, is it 800 or 1,200? I'm sorry.
So there's three aspects to it.
Okay.
One is, there is... So up to an 800-square-foot threshold, the city has no development standard, cannot apply any development standards apart from the four-foot side and rear setbacks and the 20-foot front setback.
So could they do a two-story, 800-square-foot, if the city has no say in it?
No, because we limit it to one story.
So the city does have a say in ADU under 800 square feet?
Because they need to meet their setbacks.
Well, if they meet the... Okay, but...
So whatever they can build, so the state allows us to manage, allows us to determine how many stories and what height.
So the city does have control over ADUs under 800 square feet?
If the lot is small enough.
Okay.
If the lot is big enough to accommodate an 800-square-foot ADU with the four-foot setbacks.
Right.
And the applicant wants to build it, we have to let them.
But he can build a two-story?
No, he can only build a one story.
Okay, so...
So we're still at the 18-foot height limit for detached ADUs, so getting a two-story to begin with would be somewhat difficult.
Okay, so the statement that said that the city... God, I feel like Tim Hodge sometimes. That's a compliment, Tim. Where there's an ADU of under 800 square feet, the city still has some kind of jurisdiction or some kind of say in it because they're limited to 18 feet as a single story?
Right.
Okay. And again, that's... The state doesn't have anything to say about that. The state's, as far as the state's concerned, you can build a two-story without a problem. It's the city that's saying you can't build a two-story.
Correct, yeah. As far as the state's concerned, you can build a four-story.
Okay. So if it was a 1,200-square-foot, again, assuming the lot size and everything else meets the criteria, the city still says you can't build a two-story? And their reason why not above a garage? If somebody has an existing single-story home, and the only place to effectively put an ADU, if there's no other location, who determines no other location? The city?
The city would make that determination.
Okay.
Based on site characteristics.
Now, can I go above a garage if there's no place to put a 1,200-square-foot ADU on my property?
No, because the very minimum that we will allow you is 800 square feet.
The minimum? I'm talking maximum.
I'm assuming if you want to build a 1,200-square-foot ADU, that you will have a lot over 8,000 square feet.
But I could have a 9,000-square-foot lot that backs up to a hillside, up or down, so my flat usable land is smaller than the 8,000-square-foot. Because you say lot size, you're assuming flat usable land, but if I have, you know, some properties, like up in the Knowles, you could have an 8,000-square-foot lot, but you have a very small building pad.
Correct. And if you want to build an 800-square-foot ADU on your second, above your garage, we have to let you do that.
You could, okay. So they could do it, assuming that the lot is not determinable to be built?
Yeah.
Still not too sure why we have, you can't build a two-story ADU on any size lot. Because if you're in a neighborhood surrounded with two-story houses and somebody wants to build a two-story ADU to minimize the impact on this lot, I kind of think that would be allowed.
So our traditional standard throughout the years for guest houses and accessory structures are single-story units, which is up to 18 feet. And with the ADU ordinances which kicked in 2017, 2018, where we did not have limits... Well, they were allowed above garages at that time.
Right.
But it was unclear on what the height limit was, so we may get 30-foot, 32-foot structures in the rear yard detached for detached garages. And we're trying to rein in that aspect of it to account for the accessory structure detached to be more of a single-story component and not overextend your backyard into larger structures. That's the intent.
Do we have a height requirement, a maximum height requirement in residential neighborhoods in Simi?
Usually, it's 30 feet for the main house. So if this were, again, if you're doing a room addition to a house, it could be 30 feet high.
Okay.
But if it's a detached structure, a pool house, a gazebo, a shed, it's, and proposed ADU, it'll be 18 feet.
18 feet.
And Narin pointed out that for these ADUs, we are looking at four-foot setbacks. Normally, when you look at two-story structures throughout the city, they have 10-foot side yard setbacks.
Right.
And we have several instances of ADUs built right at the four-foot setback, and there's nothing the city could do to stop those. And we get concerns all over town from neighbors concerned about that, say, "We're sorry, the state law requires four-foot setbacks." So that would also, you know, be a consideration to reduce those height limits for those detached ADUs.
To the best of your knowledge, have there been any permits pulled for ADUs above a garage in Simi?
Yeah, well, yes. We have one going, it's a couple of months ago. I know there's at least one. If it hasn't been approved already, it's certainly in the later stages of the plan check process.
Okay. And that's out of the roughly 140 ADUs? Or ADUs and JADUs? When you... On your page one, you have a number of ADUs permitted. You're including JADUs on there as well?
Yes.
Can I ask something, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The state does allow local jurisdictions to set limitations based on floor ratio, open space, and limits on lot coverage. It does allow to impose development standards. What the state is requiring us to at least provide an 800-square-foot ADU on the lot. So if it's not allowed, if it's not buildable on the surface, then that's when it can go on the second floor.
Right.
But it does allow us to have this discretion on determining of size and lot coverage and setbacks and so on and so forth.
Okay. So for clarification, the number of permits, that is, both ADUs and JADUs on page one?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions. Anybody else have any questions of staff? Get my right page here. Okay, we'll open public testimony portion of the hearing. Do we receive any requests from members of the public to make a public statement on Zoom for this matter?
I believe we have not. Are there any attendees left tonight? Okay, no more attendees on Zoom.
Did we receive any email comments on this item received after 5:00 PM today?
Yes, we did receive one email from Matthew Gelfen on behalf of Californians for Home Ownership. And this email was also sent to the planning commissioners. And it reads as follows, the planning commission, "Please see the attached correspondence in connection with agenda item 1182. Being considered at your upcoming meeting, in light of the length of the letter, we are not asking that the letter be read into the record. Instead, we ask that you read this short statement. Californians for Home Ownership is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization devoted to using legal tools to address California's housing crisis. You have been provided with a letter we submitted as part of our work monitoring local compliance with California's laws regarding accessory dwelling units. We encourage you to review our letter closely. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Matthew Gelfen." So the attached letter, they're not asking us to read it, but it will be made into the record, and the City Council may address this at their meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Yes, I'd just like to point out that, again, it's a very complex code situation, the way the legislation was written in several bills, and they were all intertwined amongst regulations. The complications arise, as indicated tonight, of what could happen. And staff, front counterstaff, planning staff is spending countless hours working with several owners throughout the city, in addition to the ones listed on page one, to interpret these codes. So codifying this into our ordinance to basically replicate the state standards and a few additions which we have jurisdiction over will certainly help the situation. And with your recommendation tonight, that would go to the City Council for an ordinance consideration.
Are there any further questions? Not, we're going to close the matter of public testimony portion of the hearing. Okay, are there any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? Guys are crickets. Commissioner Hodge, Commissioner Tolson?
No questions.
Okay, no questions, we'll proceed. May I please have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC-10-2020, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley recommending to the City Council approval of development code amendment number CS-752 pertaining to accessory dwelling units and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Troy Trump pages here for a second, my apologies. Sorry, I turned pages here for a second, my apologies. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution recommending approval of ZS 752 and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Castleberry. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Tolson. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolson?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairperson Mann?
Yes. The motion passes. There's no appeal period for zoning text amendment, and this item will proceed to the City Council with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Move to next item. Do we have, there's no... Do we have oral communications and reports? Staff, do we have any others to report?
Yes, Chairman Mann, we have a meeting coming up on September 16th. That's the continuance of the extra-space storage industrial project we hope to bring to you at that time. And we're also loading up our agendas for October, so we hope to get things rolling again in the next several months.
Do we have... Do planning commissioners have anything to report? My apologies.
I just want to thank staff for all the hard work. I know we have two ordinance amendments today, which takes quite a bit of staff time, and we've been working on these issues for a really long time. So I just want to recognize staff for all the hard work they did.
Commissioner Hodge or Castleberry? Hodge or Tolson, sorry?
I'm good. To the staff on both of these.
I actually do.
Okay.
I just want to welcome Narin to the team here, the A-team. And we look forward to seeing you again.
Great job, by the way. First presentation? You did a great job. As always, staff, you guys do a wonderful job. We appreciate it very much. How you function in these masks all the time is absolutely beyond me. It's just incredible. Mobile Home Rent Mediation Board?
We have no items tonight.
Tree Advisory Board?
And there's also no items tonight.
This concludes the meeting of September 2nd. Next meeting is scheduled for 19th? No, 16th.
September 16th.
September 16th. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Gavel once in a while.